I'd like to call to order the Thursday, August 15th Board of Education meeting. Local call. Chairman Papa Holter is here. Vice Chair Anfryo is here. Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Carol Kean Delora.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
Here.
I would like to introduce the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
The first. No report from student representatives. A total of the previous minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes of July 25th, 2018 Board of Education Special Meeting as submitted. Second. Discussion. Local call. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anfryo.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Carol Kean Delora.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 26th, 2018 Board of Education Special Meeting as submitted. Second. Discussion. Local call. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anfryo.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Carol Kean Delora.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2018 Board of Education Special Meeting as submitted. Second. Discussion. Local call. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anfryo.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Carol Kean Delora.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
The superintendent has received a resignation from Mr. Brett Jolly, oral language teacher at North Grand Prairie School, effective immediately. I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Brett Jolly, oral language teacher at North Grand Prairie School, effective immediately. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. The superintendent has received a resignation from Ms. Amy Malchulski, reading specialist at I apologize for pronouncing my name incorrectly, Totucket Valley Elementary School, effective immediately. I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Amy McElowski, reading specialist at Totucket Valley Elementary School, effective immediately. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Appointments?
I would wait for the executive session, it's contractual conversations regarding that. We also have the advisors and all that stuff.
Okay, just under appointments, we need to amend a vote that was at our special meeting because under our bylaws, we're not allowed to change the agenda, so we need to make a new vote. March, do you want to make that?
Yes. I will make a motion to give the superintendent authority to hire for the remainder of the summer, effective...our last meeting?
August 9th.
August 9th, effective August 9th through our September meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't know if this is the right place to put it in, but I want to recommend on, instead of changing whether or not we vote on certified contracts to maybe get a number percentage as well as to what they make, we can all decide to vote on a number, but I feel like since we're also in charge with the budget, instead of looking at it as a certified slash non-certified position, perhaps we should be looking at the money that is spent on hiring somebody. And I also have a suggestion due to having a new board and not really knowing the ins and outs yet to maybe have a lawyer available at our meetings so we can be steered in the right direction while having these meetings, because I know the town council has their lawyer present as well, so I'm just...
Beth, is there anything in our policies that talk about certified and non-certified teachers and how we vote, or is that just something we've done?
I don't raise a point of order, I think she's out of order. Motion on the floor is to go along with what we voted on August 9th, okay?
Well, that's what the discussion is for.
Okay, well, she's making, she's trying to amend a motion and it's out of order. She can make it as a new motion and then we can discuss it.
Well, I think it's relevant to this motion. I think that what she's saying, she doesn't want to vote on this, she's asking about questions in this discussion, so we're discussing the motion?
Well, she can speak against the motion, that's fine, but she's trying to amend the motion by adding to the original motion, so she's out of order. It's a point of order, she's out of order. She could do whatever she wants as far as trying to speak against it.
She's not amending the motion, she's asking a question, and I'm asking about the policy.
So is she on a point of information, because I didn't hear a point of information. I'd like to ask what happened, Sarah. Well, everything she said seemed to be that she was amending the motion.
No, they're asking what the policy is currently on voting for certified and non-certified teachers.
That's not what she asked, she asked that a lawyer be here and a lawyer be here, that's what she was talking about, she wanted lawyers present during certain conditions, so she's...
She was just asking for a lawyer to be present during a meeting and said she wasn't sure that if this was the appropriate time, but what I'm currently addressing is whether we should be voting on certified and non-certified teachers, and I'm asking if there's a policy which is relevant to the motion being made. And I don't know, so that's why I'm asking, Beth, because Beth is on the policy committee. And then I turn to March.
I don't believe so.
I don't, I don't believe there's a set policy on it.
It's just...
Past practice.
Just past practice.
Been past practice.
Okay.
Yes, and when you're asking for the percentage or the dollar amount, that's all contractual.
Not for non-certified staff, it's not though.
Yes, it is.
There's no contract, so how could it be for non-certified staff?
Well, for, for, for like who?
For the nurse example is one, I don't...
That's contractual.
That's contractual.
Is it the nursing union as well?
Yes.
Okay, so what staff is not contractual?
Not many.
Not many, Brett, come on, so which ones are?
It's like Mr. Chode, Mr. Winnicky.
Just so we can all, I'm asking so many questions so that everyone can hear they answered.
Mr. Chode, Mr. Winnicky, Mr. Longner.
Mr. Williams. Our staff accountant. There are some paraprofessionals who are excluded from the union, like library paraprofessionals. None of the security people are covered by an agreement. Most of, actually, I guess all of Bruce's, Bruce Williams' tech staff is not covered by an agreement. So I mean, there's probably a couple dozen people in total, but pretty much everybody else, you know, again, most paraprofessionals are unionized, custodial, clerical, caf, nurse, administrators and teachers.
So and when we're, just for definition, I just want to clarify since we're all kind of getting on the same page, when you're defining certified and non-certified, how's that defined?
Certified is administrators and teachers. Contract, for example, building principals, assistant principals, the director of special services, the director of curriculum instruction, those are our certified administrators. I have to carry a certification, but I'm going to credit for it.
Correct, well, that's what I'm saying, there's people like that have either licenses or certifications that aren't following under certified.
State of Connecticut, certified educational certificate.
So, okay.
Teaching is a separate one from administration, so for the summer, those are the ones that you give me authority.
Yep.
To hire, go into a negotiation.
Yeah, my question is just what's defined as...
And it's, it's based on your contracts, wherever they have for years of experience and their educational background.
So is your school social worker considered certified?
Yeah.
Yes.
She holds it.
Guide to counselor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, basically, anyone who's covered by TRB is certified staff.
Okay.
That's, that really is the definition?
That's a good way of putting it.
Okay, so the, the union is TRB.
So the entire teachers' union, most of, the entire administrators' union, which as I said includes most administrators except for Scott, myself and Bruce. And so that would be it. Those were, those, that's the only certified staff.
So even the non-certified are, are bound?
You have to review me again.
By and large, yes.
Any further discussion? Local call. Can we, can we...
Bring the motion.
As you say, can we review the motion?
Bring the motion? Do you have a motion?
Sort of.
The, the motion is to give the superintendent the authority to hire through the end, through the September, up to the September meeting, retroactive to August 9th, 2018.
Second.
Local call. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anfryo.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Carol Kean Delora.
No.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
And just so that, just for, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused why we had to re-vote on this, because we did not, this, if you add something to a special, to a meeting, to a spec, to the agenda for a special meeting, you can't do that, you can't add it. We didn't add anything, the agenda didn't even have the motions on it for the staff that we hired, okay? The agenda said certified staff, so I believe this fell under because it was hiring certified staff, as well as the other two motions, they weren't spelled out on the agenda either.
The purpose of the special meeting was to approve staff only, not to give the superintendent hiring power. That should have been publicized for the pub, you know, for an audience in case someone had something to say about it. I consulted with the attorney, he agreed with me, and in order to be to the letter of the law, since the board has been accused of not being transparent and not following our policy, I'd rather be clean than dirty.
Yeah.
And that's why we did it. And dirty is probably too strong of a word, but, you know, it was, you know, I know.
Because that wasn't, that wasn't how it was meant, it was meant for, for hiring certified staff, which is what the agenda read, was hiring certified staff.
The, the good news is we haven't hired anyone since that meeting.
So it's fine.
So you approved two and that's all we hired, so.
Well, it was only a week away and I was well aware of that after, in, in my era, I'll say that.
So we're, we're still very stressful, we're not hiring them next week.
And when you're talking about having an attorney at the meetings, that's going to be very costly, just so that you...
Well, let's put it under the right area since, since was absolutely, okay, clear how we felt on it being in the wrong spot, so let's make sure we get through the right spot and then could go under new business. Okay, so now we're on these.
I just have one to discuss briefly in executive session.
Okay. There's no donations, communication?
So we're under my report now. So under donations, I did get a, a communication yesterday from a coach, a dentist in town has offered to donate mouth guards, but it was short notice, it was yesterday, so I want to bring it up to you verbally. It was for the entire football team, the dentist would custom make the mouth guards, which is very helpful and preventative of concussions for contact sports, the, the better the mouthpiece, you lessen your risk of, of a concussion, so I would need a motion, it would be over a thousand dollars in, in donation for the number of football players.
Do you want to make a motion to accept a donation in excess of $1,000 for mouth guards for the football team, with great appreciation?
From the dentist.
From the dentist. Do we know the name of the dentist?
I, I do, but it's on my phone and I don't have my phone. I'll get all the information, once you approve it, we'll thank him, we'll send a letter.
I accept the motion.
Discussion. Local call. Chairman Papa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anfryo.
Yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Carol Kean Delora.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
Thank you. You know what, if we could to go back to appointments, we need to review the recommendations, we didn't do that. Right. In front of you, Mr. Winnicky passed out, I believe, four handouts? Yeah, we normally do have a motion to... So it would fall under appointments, so you have, I believe, four or three? Well, you know why, I know why it was done this way, because this was actually done under the authority to hire. So it's information as opposed to requiring a motion. Okay, so for information, you have, it's actually three pages, I have a duplicate of one. No, there's four, there's two for the high school, one department leader, maybe you didn't get the department leader. I'm not very good at handing out papers. No, I have four. Everyone else have four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you have names listed, where there, where there are no names, we have to interview, meaning there were more than one applicant for the position, and we'll be interviewing, you can see math department leader, for example, to be determined. And music. Music department leader to be determined, so we'll conduct interviews next week and those positions will be filled.
Are, are these stipend positions?
They are.
Yeah, okay.
Per contract, there's a designated amount.
Yes.
For all of these positions. So unless you have... So we're all set with appointments, okay? Moving forward to E, the goals, I'm going to hand to you at this point, as you know at the last meeting, there was a lengthy document, there was a number of goals, and the request was for specific things. I will say that the S-BAC results have not, they're embargoed, we do not have the other state results, so we can't publicly release them, so that, that kind of puts me at a little disadvantage in giving you the goal for the S-BAC. So if you look at number one, grade three through eight, once we get that, we think we should have it in the next three weeks, we can give you a more realistic measure for where we see ourselves. We put approximately two to five percentage points. Smarter Balance looks at over three years, the potential of a 10-point gain for any cohort, so we determined that that would be feasible with two to five, and once we get the results, we'll get them to you with other surrounding towns and the state average. The second one was for the PSAT and SAT, looking at our junior class and our sophomore class, the 20 and 30 are point gains that we're looking to show in the next year based upon our freshmen take the PSAT, our sophomores take the PSAT, our juniors take the PSAT, and then they take the SAT as to standardize test. So we are measuring our junior and sophomore class who have already participated in that PSAT, looking at their averages, we're looking to gain and go above state average, so if you look at the junior class below the first graph with 218 with their scores on the PSAT, we're looking to grow them to 529 in 504 in 19. The sophomore class, looking at their PSAT from the data from their freshman year, we're looking to grow that to 477 and 457 based upon their results, so that would show a 20-point gain in the PSAT, in the English writing, reading and writing, and then in math, we, we're looking for a 30-point gain in the PSAT 10 and the PSAT 11 for those two groups. The last one was the Spanish course that we added at the eighth grade level, so we're obviously looking at the current freshman curriculum that we have for Spanish 1, we're moving that down obviously to the eighth grade with the certified teachers that we're about to hire, and we're looking for 100 of the 124 students, or 80% to complete the full curriculum in Spanish 1 and earn a 70% or higher on all the cumulative assessments and year-end course grades, homework, everything that goes into it, enabling them to enroll in Spanish 2 for the 19, 20 year. So that's our goal right now. Yes.
Could I move to this? When it says PSAT NMQS, exactly what is that?
Tracy, the NMQS is the...
That's the 11th grade PSAT, it's the National Merit Scholar Qualifying Exam.
For scholarships.
So there's a PSAT 9, a PSAT 10, and then the PSAT 11 is the National Merit.
So when it has a hyphen and 509 next to it, what is that 509?
That's a score, a score for...
Is that the mean? Is that the average?
Yes, average score of that class.
Okay, and then next to it it has B, E, B, R, W, what am I...
That's what we used to consider the verbal for like, for SAT, it stands for evidence-based reading and writing.
Ah, okay, so 484, is that's the average nationwide, is that what it is or statewide?
No, that's taking the, what we, what the students scored during their sophomore PSAT and adding what is expected by the college board or world between the 10th grade PSAT and the 11th grade PSAT.
So is the PSAT scored differently than the SAT or...
No, not anymore, there is, it's, you can't score 800 in PSAT because it doesn't have anything to put it on the SAT, but they are all scored so that there's such a direct correlation between the scores.
The, the junior year PSAT is the qualifier with the letters that you just said, the MMQS, to, to earn national merit and then for obviously monies for college.
Okay.
For that one time, they take a junior year.
So then I take it that the 509 would get them to be qualified for scholarships?
No.
No, no, that's just, again, what, here, they were as sophomores in the PSAT, what, what expected growth should be for the class between 10th grade and 11th grade, so we take what their scores were in 10th grade, add what the college board expects them to grow, and that's the score you see right there.
So that, to be a national merit scholar, their average scores are usually 700 or or higher, 800's a perfect score, so.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say, Tracy gave a presentation at the curriculum meeting earlier and the republic handouts, I don't know, maybe that would help the rest of you understand this?
I have that, I'll be happy to do that.
Because she explained all this to us at the curriculum meeting, and it was done very well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it might help the rest of you understand.
So we'll get back with the, once we get the scores.
God, I really like how you made this measurable, you have some, you have some other goals, can you do the same thing for those as well, even unless that you're evaluating like a music teacher, how that is impacting, like, just so we know.
Sure, now some of them...
You have some things you're just evaluating that are official goals, but just...
Right, now, some of, some of are pretty straightforward, like for increased security, I could just put that, you know, 17 cameras will be...
Right, some of it's like right off the cuff, as soon as you do it, you check it off and it's done.
I'll send them to you.
Yeah, some of it's...
From the last meeting, the ones that are in there.
Just use, use what your goals are, put the measure, and then as you achieve them, we're good, I'm going to tick them off, kind of, basically, so then there's going to be more complex ones that are throughout the year and are based on student achievement that will continue on.
Sure.
And those are kind of the more robust ones, but there's some other ones that were...
Yeah, they're for kids.
Yeah.
Okay.
And some of these, we might not get the results until, well, this year you said they're late, but August, so.
We should hopefully have them in the next two to three weeks.
That's what you said.
I'm hoping, so. Okay, convocation, you're all invited, Monday, the 27th, we are going to meet at 8 o'clock in NBIS cafeteria, and then we're going to move over to the auditorium, we're going to switch it up a little bit this year, so everyone is obviously invited, you don't need to RSVP or anything, and, and if you can't make it at 8, but you can make it at 9 and go over to the, to the auditorium, that's fine as well, okay? The entire staff will be there, we invite, we invite all members of the school community.
I'm going.
Okay, you speak.
I just, I wrote, looked down because I've been making updates, so I just wanted to make sure.
You're coming and you're speaking?
And yes, yes.
Good, we confirm that, we're good. New teacher orientation, Thursday, August 23rd, next Thursday, so I'm, I'm hoping that by August 23rd, I've completed the hiring. In the district, we are very close, and just as an update with, with a couple of positions, our biggest challenge has been the high school culinary. If you do know a high school culinary teacher certified, please, if anyone out there is watching on TV live, on Facebook, we are looking for a high school culinary teacher. We've gone to, indeed, to, to expand our reach, and what unfortunately we're getting is non-certified people that are interested in the position, but we're just unable to hire them, is not a shortage area, so if you know of anyone, please encourage them to call us. So we have the new teacher orientation that Thursday, they go through a, about a two-hour presentation and they get a lot of information concerning healthcare and the faculty handbooks and everything about insurance, and so it's a pretty intense two-hour period, we have a breakfast with them, so if you'd like to come at 8:30 on Thursday, I know many of you work, it, it's tough to get, you know, time off at that time of the day, you're more than welcome to come in and say hello to our new staff members. Our summer professional development update, I know Tracy, did you go through it?
Um, in my committee meeting, I did.
Okay, do you want to just speak to?
Sure.
Just an overview, I know I have a handout, does the board have this?
Um, everyone has it.
Okay. You can just kind of touch on...
So I'll just touch, touch a few things, um, much of the summer is spent with curriculum rating and sinceing teachers in different areas, a concern for that and a concern for us, so that was over 200 hours of professional development work done in that area. We also spoke about several outstanding opportunities that either we were able to provide the teachers or the teachers secured for themselves, which is always really great for me to see them really going out and showing initiative and finding the funding for some great things that they've done this summer. For instance, our literacy coach, Marissa Levine, participated in a workshop that would help her get ready to lead the writer's workshop implementation in support of math. We had our art and music people, a few of them go to a series on designing standards-based teaching and learning at Centor, Connecticut State University. Ken Rice, our project lead the way teacher, got an additional certification in digital electronics on Project Lead the Way. Dr. Carter Welch drew our Title IV grant, spent with me at Harvard Graduate School of Educational Leadership Program. I finished my UConn preschool through three leadership fellowship. Amy Farady, our science teacher at MBHS, became a Google certified trainer, which is wonderful for us because it can be a very expensive training, and she can now train all of our people, she, we were able to send her for that Google Camp, and pass three tests as well as a video and, and extensive process through the Title IV running. So she is now one of approximately only 10 Google certified trainers in a 25-mile radius of my grand work. This is Carol Cibetta and Tia DePama, this I believe was in one of the newspapers in our board briefs, went to a program for Woodrow Wilson History Quest Fellowship about gaming and using innovative ways to help students engage in history, specifically American history. Megan Redman and Lauren Sheehan drew their own grant that they secured from Fund for Teachers organization, did research, most Florida Keys, to research the ecological impacts of Hurricane Irma.
That sounds questionable.
It's a great thing, well, and I have to be honest with you, it's not something that probably we could fund, but these young ladies decided that they thought it would be great to include in the environmental studies units of science, some general science units, and they secured the funds for Fund for Teachers, and they went to a turtle hostel, theater of the sea, key deer refuge.
Is that going to be a field trip this year?
Um, I'm going on it, so.
Megan Redman does an unbelievable job with the environmental science courses, and she's always out in the field, she's a go-getter, so.
So, and they have tons of pictures, and they already sent us some work, they're presenting during those first two days at the high school to share with their peers some of the work that they were able to do. Carol Seiden was granted a Fitch loan grant to help bring resilient robotics to TDS, which is very exciting, and of course, I think, again, you may have already heard this, but Jackie Thurston was received a prestigious Fulbright award, which means she will travel all over the world, or could travel all over the world, to speak with other educators in countries and talk about global concerns in education, and to help them see things from our perspective, maybe some things that we're doing that we're missing, and obviously the same for them, that they can share with us, and the great things that are happening in their country. That is not all of everything that was done, but a sample that I wanted to make sure that you were able to see.
Thank you. That's great.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Okay, thank you, Tracy.
That makes me really happy to be on the board, honestly, because there are some days it's not so happy.
It is, and I have to say, it has been the last three years that I could really say that teachers have sought out opportunities to expand their professional development with our assistance, but by all means, through their own sheer will and desire.
That's just awesome.
It really is.
Well, they bring so much back to the kids.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's the beauty of it. And it's during their time in the summer that they're doing it. So kudos to all of them. Summer camp has concluded. We had a great, a great summer with our kids. They had great opportunities. We had two of our teachers, Kim Toll and Nick Shamp, as co-directors for the camp. They both teach at the high school, and it was really nice to have staff members who wanted to spend their entire summer with children. You think at the end of the year that some of them need a break, and they went, but they came, and they were totally involved throughout the entire summer with all of the opportunities that our students had, and they went really, really well. So another year in the books for summer camp, and thanks to Central Office for doing a great job of really managing and making sure it ran smoothly and went off without a hitch. So that concludes my report. If I could move that into executive.
Budget and operation? Done?
Well, we talked about a bunch of things. There were a number, we discussed a number of things that were done in the, this summer in terms of the work that's been completed at the schools, including a fair amount of work on the sidewalk and associated roadways at Jerome Harrison, redoing the, or beginning the renovation of the life skills room at Totucket Valley. We still have some work to do there. We did some asbestos work at the high school, and that retiling is now complete. We spent a fair amount of time talking about the roof at NBIS and the work that has been done and the, the need to make sure that we have a plan in place to continue to maintain that equipment. We talked about a few of the things that are currently in the capital budget that we have not started on yet, such as waterproofing the auditorium brick, unit ventilators at either TVEES or the high school and replacement of the blue, the dreaded blue pickup truck. And we also talked a bit about the capital plan that the town is looking for, a five-year capital plan that the town is looking for by the end of the month.
Yeah, we just had a meeting before this meeting, and I mean, Tracy, we kind of went through everything, but we did just to highlight for the language requirement for the children going into eighth grade, we wanted an 80% or better for language, just to make sure that they're getting, 80% of the children are, are getting a 70%, if that makes sense. We want 80% of the population to score 70% to make sure that it's a go and that they're getting it, because we're cutting into their RTI time for the language, I believe, right? Is that what we... So that's just something as a...
What's RTI?
The reading.
Responsive intervention.
It's about the intervention support that we give students that may not be a regular in certain subjects.
Okay.
So we've included those students, except those that have IP and resource in that standard class and aligned with scout's goal, we're going to evaluate the program and make sure that we are really giving students what they need most with that class. If they are missing some of that responsive intervention time, we want to make sure that it's, it's worth the while for those students.
And then the other thing we went over, which she discussed here, was the, the goals to, and looking into, like, when you're looking at grade seven, to look at like, what grade six did. So you're comparing the same class, not necessarily the number, but the children in the class. So it was very good, I mean, she did, it was great. I enjoyed our meeting tonight, and did a very good job. Pension?
Who is that?
Yeah, we met. The pension committee met last week for an update on second quarter activity. Pension benefits were approved for Matt Canelli, and an update was given on the pension amount for Joanne Calmary, which was previously approved. The majority of the meeting focused on a report from Hooker and Holm, the new manager of the defined benefit plan. They are currently preparing for the transition of all funds from the current brokerage firm to their firm. The transfer should be completed by October 1st. The next pension committee meeting will be held in October.
No policy? No ACES? No building committee? No communication? All right. Why don't we do new business? We can adjourn.
No division?
No division.
Okay.
So we'll continue business?
Yeah. So just to get back to the lawyer thing, I know that they cost money, but the town council has their lawyer at their meetings all the time, and I just thought with such a new Board of Ed that we have, perhaps it would be in our benefit to have a lawyer present at our meetings at least for maybe three, four months, just to see how it goes. I'm just throwing it out there, because I know, I'm kind of learning the ropes, and I just would think it would be helpful so that we know what we're doing and to make sure that we're accountable and doing things correctly.
So what's he going to ensure?
Huh?
What is he going to ensure? We've been here, I've been here, one of the newer ones, for seven or eight months, and we've been doing without a lawyer, and we've kind of learned by trial and error. So exactly what would the lawyer teach us or instruct us to do?
I just think it would go, I think it would eliminate a lot of back and forth, a lot of questions that we might have. I mean, we can, I just was at that last meeting where it was, there was questions and stipulations, and just being a new board, I would feel wanting to protect myself and the board that it might be a good idea. I mean, if it's not, it's not. I'm just throwing it out there.
But I think CAE explained to us that we are protected, number one, and the only time that people are asking questions, it's either of the superintendent or not, or a building, all right? What legal questions have come up?
Well, I'm not really looking at the legality of things, I'm just looking at how we're, we're doing things.
I think we're doing fine.
Scott, if we brought up an attorney in, is the cost of per hour cost?
Our, our least expensive attorney right now is, is probably just under $250 per hour, and there would be travel time to and from, and then at least probably a two-hour meeting. So you could talk about potentially anywhere from a $500 to a $700 event. I don't know of any Board of Eds that have attorneys there unless they're discussing legal issues. CAE does offer workshops. If you want to go out and spend two, two days or a full day at a CAE workshop to better learn the role of the board member, you have the opportunity to do that. It's a menu price, it would be much cheaper for us to send you out for a full-day CAE workshop to learn about the doings of the board.
And...
Cost-effectively, the attorney thing would be...
They should be coming up in the fall, too. They usually have those workshops, like around election time.
For board members.
Right before and after, you know, the election. I've found them very helpful. I've been to three.
Do you get a book rate? I'm not, I'm not joking, but I guess if you care...
I could, I could reach out to the gentleman that came down and see if a few people wanted to go, what it would be for an eight-hour workshop.
And the other question I had is, so town council has an attorney there, do they deal with more, because I don't always go to those meetings, and I don't always watch them, to be honest, but I try to keep up with like, what's current by reading. Is an attorney there because they're dealing with more legal matters than we deal with?
There are more legal matters in their meeting. If you go and you look at the amount of times that there's something with, and, you know, we have two members here now, or we had, we have one, with some of the questions that are asked of, you know, pertaining to the running of the town and the bylaws and charter and things like that. And so Rose, if you want to speak to the attorney and what the...
Sure. So we actually have, you know, I don't know if it's per se a written contract, but our per hourly rate is much cheaper than what the Board of Ed is, because we have so much set aside for legal fees, and that covers, the town attorney not only comes to town council meetings, but they could go to police commission meetings, meeting at town halls. Our current attorney dedicates two hours every Wednesday after a town council meeting that he meets with the town manager and department heads. So we get a very discounted rate.
What is your budgeted amount for an attorney for the year?
I have to look in, I don't know right offhand, but I believe his hourly rate is 150, is what.
Well, wasn't it with Jazmond, they, they spent over like $125,000 to $150,000 a year for the attorneys these?
Well, it depends on what cases come up, because it could also be that they are doing planning and zoning, they could be doing other commissions that ask for legal opinions that come into the town council.
So the difference, we're not asking for legal opinions during our meeting.
Yeah, we have a lot of, like, statutes and, and the town charter and things like that, that we need a legal opinion on. And sometimes they're asked, it's not necessarily at that meeting, but they generate legal opinions, and it's not just for the council, it could be for other boards and commissions.
What we need is a bylaws error and a book on Robert's Rules of Order. And just having a bylaws, you could just peruse the bylaws and see what's going on. And if you have Robert's Rules of Order, you know, making motions and things of that nature, that's basically what we do. We don't have to answer legal questions unless getting sued or, you know, we have commute with the town council or something, the attorney's up to stand by, but we don't need somebody here to tell us what our job is or whether we're doing it right or wrong.
And if we did have a meeting that was going to get more prestigious, we could, we could invite the attorney to come into special, special meetings?
We've done that with personnel issues, we've done that. For personnel issues or anything with discipline or anything with potential termination or, obviously, all our contractual negotiations, they come in and they work directly with us.
But also if a student gets expelled and you've got a warrant, the attorney comes in for you.
If we get to an expulsion and we need legal advice for that, we would do that as well.
You might, I mean, I don't know what everybody's schedules are, but you might want to look at the CAE trainings. I mean, they, I'm telling you, I've been there three times, and they were very, very informative and very helpful. One's like, one was like, I don't know, 11:00 in the morning till like 8:00 at night, which I have, you know, they gave you lunch and dinner and everything, really informative, though.
But the attorney may charge you for your dinner, too. That's part of its expenses, if you, if you watch that.
Well, as, as the agendas are cropping up and we see things that we might need an attorney for, we can make that decision, I believe, like, as a case by case.
Case by case.
So that we can, you know, if anyone's looking at the agenda, we do get them beforehand, and I think we'd have enough time to invite the attorney if something is coming up.
Thank you.
Is that true?
Thanks.
And make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
We'd like to skip to visitors and press, so they don't have to sit around.
Oh, you're skipping over to this?
And then we'll go, then we'll go into executive session, at least anybody wants to be.
Well, I have to wait around, why can't they wait? That's what they're here for, right? Go ahead.
Visitors and press? Anyone?
Come on, you gotta make it worthwhile now. Go ahead, James.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss those executive sessions items in the agenda.
Motion to read it.
Oh, I have to read it. Motion to adjourn to executive session as per the Section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statutes, as permitted by Section 1-200, 6A, PNE of the Connecticut General Statutes to discuss Agenda Item 7, B, appointments, C, lead, and Item 9, A, negotiations.
Second.
You ready, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Keith O'Rourke as principal of North Bramford Intermediate School at a salary as stated, as stated in the administrator's contract.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote? Chairman Kappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafry?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So as I did with our last appointment, Mr. O'Rourke, I'm not going to put you on the spot, say a few words, I thanked the board for their support, for participation on the committee, for being a part of that, it's important. I don't have to go into a long bio about Mr. O'Rourke, but his dedication, he's been with us five years, going into his sixth year. He came from Fairfield and has brought a great deal to the district and got us a very tough time. So I want to thank him for, for his commitment to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Wonderful. All right. Can I do a good of the board?
Well, you can do the board.
Oh.
You must do the board until 10.
All right, I'm going to do it.
Now, let's say up until 11:30 if you're still alive.
All right. Just keep in mind, we're still being videoed here, so anyway.
Just smile and nod, just smile and nod.
So for the good of the board, just quickly, I received an email from the guidance department at the high school today, and just quick numbers, it's been a busy summer. We have enrolled 13 new students, everywhere from East Haven, two from Arkansas, Massachusetts, one from Pakistan, Wallingford, New Haven, a homeschooled student coming back, and a student from Holy Trinity coming back. We also have two Mercy students coming back and two Notre Dame students coming back as well. So 13 total. We have fewer than 10 students departing the eighth grade class.
Nice.
We, we had been running 20 to 30 students per year, and we're less than 10. So I want to acknowledge and recognize the efforts of educating about the high school, the opportunities in transition of those students. I think it paid great dividends. You did see the, the video last year that the high school put together the last two years, and they put a great deal of effort of bringing the kids in and showing and going through that process, so thank you. That's it for me.
I would, I would like to add, Babbie Noon is putting on a girls' field hockey camp, and my daughter is participating in that, and she's having a blast, and there's a lot of high school kids working there as well. So it's really cool listening to my daughter talk about the interaction that she's having with the high school kids as well, because it's a...
How old is she?
She's going into E. So it's eighth grade and under, and then the high school kids help out. So I just think that's really...
It's awesome.
It's really awesome.
We have, we have 30, 30 girls at the camp, grade three is our youngest through grade eight, and then we have pretty much our entire field hockey team there with Coach Noon and the assistants.
It's really...
And they're, they're having a ball.
A blast, yeah.
It's awesome.
That's really... And Babbie's so positive.
The best.
Even like, oh, she says really, the best, so...
The best.
Yeah, she's great.
Yeah, she's, I mean, she really...
Oh, my daughter played field hockey, believe me, I... Yep.
Love her. I mean, and it's so nice that she's a female to be an inspiration for the girls. A lot of your coaches at the high school level, the whole class coach, you know, it's so, it's so good for younger girls, especially middle aged, to see female athletes.